Hi, everybody. Thank you for spending your Monday after a holiday with us. I'm glad to see so many Huntington Beach residents here. And we have some of our Huntington Beach council members here and our city manager. And we thank you for being with us tonight. It's refreshing to see your interest in this topic. My name is Lacey Shane. I'm the CEO of the Association of California Cities, Orange County. And we are a nonprofit that engages in public policy practices in Orange County in California. We -- our tagline is "The Hub for Good Public Policy." And we try to help policymakers and staff and the members of the public come together and learn about the critical and tricky issues in public policy, such as infrastructure and housing. Our aim tonight is to identify objective trends in housing and in building and to analyze the demographics, both in Huntington Beach but all around Orange County and, in fact, in our state, that are changing and what that means for the housing needs and the housing industry. We want to establish a baseline of what the laws are and the mandates that cities have to comply with. Tonight is not about necessarily what Huntington Beach is doing or any one plan or any one vision that is reserved for every city, including Huntington Beach, to decide for themselves. Tonight's about helping us all understand more fully the external forces that can impact housing policy. And it's also about how to harness that information so we can enhance our own communities and try to come together on important issues. That's why we've assembled a tremendous panel of experts for you tonight to try to accomplish our mission. And they are leaders in legal issues regarding housing, demographics, and planning, as well as nonprofit and affordable housing. You'll be able to get to know these folks in a minute. But before we bring them up, I'm going to introduce you to our moderator. Her name is Kate Kleemo, and she is the Assistant Vice Chancellor of Community and Government Relations for UC Irvine. Kate works collaboratively with senior administrators at UCI and the University of California Office of the President to maintain UCI's position as one of the most dynamic campuses in the University of California system. She has an illustrious career, both in the public and private sectors, and is one of Orange County's most respected minds in public policy. Kate is a graduate of Colgate University, and she and her husband reside in Costa Mesa. So if you would join me in taking some notes, absorbing the data and information, and learning more about perhaps one of the most challenging issues facing Huntington Beach and our Orange County cities, will you please help me welcome Kate Kleemo?
Illustrious. I don't know that that word's been applied to me before. How exciting. For you, anyway, to have someone illustrious here tonight to be your emcee. So according to my Patriots' Almanac, today in 1835, Mark Twain was born. He has been described as the greatest American humorist of his age and the father of American literature. We all have a favorite quote, I'm sure. I like "clothes make the man; naked people have little to no influence on society." There you go. Okay. I knew the jokes would get there. But for tonight, the quote I think that has a purpose is "The secret of getting ahead is getting started." So to get started, if you'd all please stand and join me in the pledge. We'd like to honor our great country, which encourages us to assemble, opine, and have witty, thoughtful discussions like Mark Twain. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well done. Yes, you all -- it's just a program in there, right? Okay. To set some context for our discussion tonight, we want to share some information from the Orange County Business Council's 2015 Workforce Housing Scorecard, which examines and analyzes the current and projected housing trends and provides a preview of where Orange County is headed in terms of workforce housing and how it will impact demographic, economic, and business competitiveness factors. Now, the term workforce housing has a lot of definitions, but the framework for this report, workforce housing is defined as the necessary infrastructure that Orange County and its cities must provide to adequately house the region's current and future workforce across the full spectrum of occupational categories and income levels. Workforce housing is much more than just affordable housing in its traditional sense. It is housing that will encourage the diverse spectrum of occupations and income levels that make up a modern, robust, multifaceted economy. Now, the Workforce Housing Scorecard is released at a turning point for the housing market, as home prices, construction, and demand are on the rise. Though these are positives for the future of housing and business competitiveness, there are still challenges ahead in supplying a range of high-quality, affordable housing options for Orange County's workforce. I could go on, but really, OCBC has done a much better job by putting together a brief video. So if we can dim the lights and look at the screen, we'll all watch together.
They say that home is where the heart is. It's the foundation upon which we build strong families, productive employees, prosperous businesses, and vibrant communities. Yet here in Orange County, home is at the heart of a number of serious challenges. In fact, according to an independent study conducted by the Orange County Business Council, our county's lack of sufficient housing of all types in all price ranges is making it difficult for the new generation of businesses and employees, from tech startups and healthcare providers to teachers and corporate managers, to build a successful, rewarding life here, all of which perpetuates the perception of the Orange County lifestyle as desirable but unattainable. And that means our county's traditional balance of housing, jobs, and quality of life today is becoming unbalanced. The reason: lower-than-normal housing starts are combining with rising demand to create historically low housing availability countywide. Research shows that we'll have to build 60,000 more housing units to keep up with demand for those living here now, with almost 100,000 more units needed by 2040. This, in turn, is pushing housing costs through the roof while impeding efforts to attract and retain businesses and well-educated workers. Today, young people, students, our children and grandchildren, the future leaders of our county, continue to leave the area in search of a more affordable lifestyle elsewhere. This, over time, can lead to an aging population paying fewer tax dollars, further straining the county's ability to provide vital resources and services in health, education, transportation, safety, air quality, economic development, and more in the years ahead, making Orange County less desirable and even less attainable down the road. These are the facts. Today, it's imperative for all of us to thoughtfully, creatively pursue new solutions for land planning, land reuse, and open space; to reclaim the balance of housing, jobs, and quality of life that's made our community great; to build the Orange County of tomorrow on a solid footing of optimism, energy, and opportunity. Because when it comes to securing our county's future prosperity, there's no place like home.
It really shows what we're talking about today. It's not in a bubble, right? We can't just talk about housing. We have to talk about how housing and jobs work together, how our economy needs to be supported by not just new home construction but a place for people who are working in those jobs to live. So to do that, we've assembled a really wonderful panel. I'm going to ask them to come up on stage. And as I -- I will say lovely, rich, illustrious things about them as I introduce them individually a little bit later on. But for right now, I'd like you all, all three of you, to join me up here on stage. We have Richard Golis from the Concord Group, Steve Pontell with National Community Renaissance, and Todd Leishman from Best Best &amp; Krieger. And while they settle in, I'm going to tell you a little bit about how tonight's format will go. Each panelist will have 10 minutes to make their presentation, after which there will be an hour of question and answer. If you would like to submit a question, please write your question on the provided note cards and hand it to staff members, who will be going up and down the aisles to collect your note cards. Are our staff members there? Will you wave? Staff members, see bright, smiling faces there? Thanks. So if you need a card, raise your hand right now, and our wonderful staff members will hand it to you. Penmanship matters. Makes it easier for me to read the question, but that is how we're going to conduct Q&amp;A tonight via note cards. And please also indicate if the question is meant for the panel at large or for a specific panelist. All righty. Rules are set. Phones are off. We've said the pledge. We've had an introduction. We are ready to go. So with that, I'd like to start by introducing our first panelist, Richard Golis. Richard is a co-founder and principal of the Concord Group, which is based in Newport Beach. He was elected a trustee to the Urban Land Institute in 2012 and has been a governor of the ULI Foundation since 2006. He is also a past chair of the Community Development Council and juror for the Awards for Excellence and chair of the Orange County District Council. Richard serves on the Advisory Board of Jamboree Housing Corporation, a leading community development organization specializing in affordable housing. In addition, he is currently co-chair of the Advisory Board of the Department of Policy, Planning, and Design at the University of California, Irvine. Zot, zot. That's the UCI anteater. A native of Boston, Richard is a graduate of Brown University with a degree in international relations. The floor is yours.
Thank you. You're going to be -- they're going to be looking at slides over your head.
Applause, applause.
Oh, great. Yeah, illustrious is a great term. I didn't know that. And for my friends in the audience, they don't believe you. Great. So let's see. Perfect. So what I want to talk about in my -- try and do it even in nine minutes, if I can, with my clock here, is to actually try and look at what the Business Council put out in that slideshow that you saw and put a few numbers and some context to that conversation so that we can start to think about what it actually means and what do we do about it. So as we think about -- I always want to, you know, talk about three different things. So the first few comments I'll make will be around the context of growth. What are some of the real numbers? What do they mean? Secondly, we'll talk about demographic destiny and what impact that has on our land use thinking. And finally, I'll put out some ideas that I've had over the last 10 or 15 years around implications for development patterns and how we need to be thinking about planning. So it was kind of apropos. Mark Twain would have been about 50 in 1889. I assume nobody here remembers 1889. But this is a map of the county of Orange. And when -- it doesn't go there. But when you look at it, this is really the map of the ranchos. So a little bit of historical context. 1936, you can start to see some red growth down at the bottom by the ocean. You can start to see in some of those areas some of the dark settlement patterns, but really focus towards what we consider now Northern Orange County. Fast forward another 10 years, the bright red is the beginning of the post-war boom in our county as our central cities were growing. But notice that the southern half is still all agriculture, except for that little dot there, little square, which is the El Toro Marine Base, which of course was commissioned at that time. 50s and 60s, the most rapid growth that we've actually seen in the county, essentially infilled almost everything to the north of what is now the 55 Freeway or Newport Boulevard. And then we get to 2010, another 50-year run, and we've essentially built out all of the greenfield space that we have in the county. Why is that important? It's important because as we start to think about -- if I can get to my notes. As we start to think about the nature of growth, our point is that growth is actually inevitable. When you start looking at the math that the Business Council put out and you start to decompose it a little bit, United States is going to add -- wow, we're going to add another 2.5 million people by 2025. California's going to add 800,000. And the county of Orange is going to add another 20,000 per year. What does that mean? It's 120 people per hour in the United States. 36 people per hour in California. And if we did the math right, it's one person per hour in the county of Orange. And the Business Council did their math on housing demand. Our math suggests that that's a requirement of an additional 90,000 net new housing units just to keep up with the people who will be growing within our county. Back in 2002, the Business Council in Cal State-Fortin did a survey, and a few of us remember when that came out. And the survey was interesting. They surveyed residents within the county, and everybody knew back in 2002 that the county was growing rapidly and it would continue to grow. And they also indicated that these growth issues that relate to transportation, infrastructure, obviously workforce housing and the like, were among the most important issues that we had to face as a county 12, 15 years ago. This was kind of the interesting dynamic, and I'll ask you folks if someone you can shout out. The only time, I guess, you can shout out tonight. What percentage of Orange County's growth is from natural increase, meaning birth over death, or meaning our own kids and grandkids? Anyone want to guess? Throw out a percentage.
Minus five.
Minus five on one end? Who else? Few more notes. 40%? 2%? The answer is 65%. Actually, over 65% of Orange County's growth that's projected over the next 10 years or so is from our own internal growth. People who are already here, about 30% is the net in migration. In other parts of California, it's actually higher. Some cases, high as 90% natural. In other places, some more urbanized areas, it's actually a little more on net migration. But the key is it's 65%. What percent of Orange County residents in that survey do you think actually knew that number? Zero? Actually, it was 8%. So here's the gap. We have some actual facts that are there that suggest certain patterns of growth are taking place and are pretty well documented by various independent agencies and the like. Yet, most of us think that that growth is coming from somewhere else. And the challenge that we have as we start thinking about it is that maybe we're not all working with the same set of assumptions. And if we have gaps in our assumptions versus reality, it might make policy skew in an odd direction. So what else happened? So we aren't really going to talk about Huntington Beach too much, but if you remember, I think it was last week, there was an editorial in the Orange County Register, and the title was "How Much Housing for Huntington?" And I'm sure everyone saw this, or hopefully you did. And it basically put the point out there related to what was happening with some of the choices being made here politically. And I thought this point was really the key. The only way for young people starting out, as well as those struggling to lift themselves up, to live in Huntington Beach, is for the city to increase its housing stock. Now, I'm not judging what the decision was or what the policies are in the city, but clearly, my point is that sharing demand across a region is quite contentious. And it's probably one of the most important issues that you're going to be facing. So what are some of the facts, what we call "facts of life cycle" in Huntington Beach? The Business Council talked about it in broad cartoon language, but let's look specifically. When you look at the age distribution today in Huntington Beach, fairly even, 20, 22%, maybe 18, 22% across the 25 age group, all the way to the 65-plus. But when we look at the share of growth, this is 2010 going forward to 2020, we see a major shift taking place, where over 120% of the growth is age 45-plus. In fact, about 90% of the growth is coming from folks age 65-plus. And we actually have significant losses among our younger population, the families and those who are starting out. What's important is the unintended consequences. When we start having those demographic patterns, we end up, by definition, not freeing up housing stock. People aren't moving. They're staying in place, and it causes the prices to go up. So we know that Huntington Beach is expensive relative to the county. Factually speaking, it's about 10 to 15% more expensive to buy a house in Huntington Beach than it is in other parts of the county overall. And it's about 5% more expensive to rent. The other unintended consequence has to do with commute times and commute distances in particular. Here, we're looking at 2002. And what I'd like to look at these maps, you can see the dark blue are folks that are working in those areas. Actually, this is where they live, right? People who work in Huntington Beach, where do they live? So you have a lot of people who do live fairly close, not all within the city limits, but you still have 52% in 2002 who lived within 10 miles of where they worked. You only had 21% who commuted over 25 miles. Now, fast forward to the next set of data, 2013. And if you can see on the map, we have a significant increase of folks who are not living in the city but yet who are commuting in. Okay? We actually have 50,000 workers every day commuting into the city of Huntington Beach. We actually have 70,000 residents of Huntington Beach commuting out every day. So when we look at that scale, that seesaw of jobs and housing, we've got another 120,000 cars or commutes, I should say, it's not necessarily always cars, another 120,000 commutes that are taking place in and outside the city. So there's something we have to be thinking about around this balance that needs to be fixed. The unintended consequences. Someone said to me earlier, "Why do you have this old gray slide of these cars?" Well, because that's kind of the image of commute, right? It's kind of dark. That's the 55 Freeway coming out of Orange County into the Inland Empire. The picture to the right, there's my nine minutes. There you go. Perfect, because I'm done. The picture on the right is actually Levittown, which is the suburban sprawl in New York. And then there's a picture of a suburban community. The unintended consequences are distances to work, are different kinds of community than perhaps the millennials and younger generation want to live in. So what do we do about it? Final points. We have four. The first is that we need to recognize, as we started out earlier talking about, that housing is actually infrastructure. And we have to be investing in our infrastructure of housing the same way that we're investing in our roads and our water systems and other utilities. We have to plan to accommodate growth that is actually happening whether we do anything about it or not. It's already happening here. Most importantly, we have to think about collaboration. And one of the things we've all been working on is how do local communities, community associations, city governments, county organizations, the state and federal levels, all work together with residents and business to figure this stuff out. And finally, and probably most importantly, we want to take a long-run view. Because again, the issues in 2002, and probably if we had done the survey in 1962, the issues would have been exactly the same. And we keep asking the same questions, and we keep asking the same questions, we keep asking the same questions. But it's sometimes we don't actually do anything about it. Done.
Excellent. Thank you. Really solid grounding in what we're going to discuss a little bit later today. And now, a little technical handoff here. There's that. I'm very pleased to introduce Steve Pontell. I've had the good fortune of knowing him for quite a number of years. He is the Chief Executive Officer and President of National Community Renaissance. In 1996, Steve founded the La Jolla Institute, a California-based nonprofit think tank that advances a better understanding of the critical elements necessary for both communities and corporations to achieve sustainable economic competitiveness. He is a nationally recognized authority on community development and creating forward-thinking organizations to maximize evolving market environments. Steve has a Bachelor of Science degree from Cal Poly in regional -- sorry, Cal Poly in city and regional planning, and an EMBA from Claremont Graduate University's Drucker School of Business. In addition, he is an all-around good guy. Please help me welcome Steve Pontell.
Ah, let's get off that slide really quickly. That's better. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Wow, that was really weak. Good evening. Did Richard really put you all to sleep? Good job, Richard. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you very much. So it is a pleasure to be here. And my job, and this is, you know, I'm the sacrificial lamb or something, but my job is to primarily talk about the need for housing that is affordable, often known as affordable housing. And so I'm going to set it in a context in order to kind of lead us into a thought process and a discussion. You know, there are two basic needs that we often talk about that human beings need. And it breaks down to food and -- so this is not complicated. This is something that we know. And one of the biggest challenges we have as a society is if we, as a society, do not plan for and enable the provision of shelter for the people that are here, people are going to find their own shelter. And it's often not going to be shelter that we want them to have. And I think it's really important to take that into consideration. The state of California currently has a housing deficit of a million and a half units for the people that live here today. So if we built a million and a half new housing units tomorrow, we would be at even. And that would have, obviously, significant positive consequences and significant challenges. But in the meantime, what happens as a result of not having an adequate supply of housing? And so I'm going to walk through that a little bit. And then I'm going to talk a little bit about what does subsidized housing look like. And then I'm going to conclude with some more statistics, because you haven't had enough yet. So here are the consequences of not having adequate shelter, and they fall into three primary categories. One is, what is the role shelter plays in people's lives? What are the negative consequences of not having adequate shelter? And the easiest way to think about it is being homeless is not a very healthy lifestyle. So I don't think there's any debate about that. Because if you're homeless and you have surgery, where do you go to recover from surgery? So in LA County, just to give you a context, the LA County Public Health Department launched a housing agency inside their public health department. And this is what they found. By providing housing for homeless people, essentially solving homelessness, the way you solve homelessness is you provide housing. I know, just kind of let that sink in. But here's the impact. 77% reduction in emergency room visits and an 84% reduction in recidivism, the number of times people go back to the emergency room, because the homeless population uses the emergency room as their primary healthcare, and a net benefit of $34,000 per housed homeless person over the cost of providing services for somebody living on the streets versus the cost of providing housing and the services after they're housed. So the LA County Public Health Department is realizing a significant net gain financially by providing housing for homeless. Now, that's one extreme end of the scale. But all the way through the spectrum, people that are adequately housed are healthier than people that are not adequately housed. Kids that are adequately housed perform better in education than kids that are not adequately housed. And so it's important to understand the role shelter plays and the quality of life and the quality of our communities is huge. And so that million and a half shortage we have in housing means we're less healthy as a society and our education quality is less good. The second consequence of not having adequate housing is we have the people anyway. And so then we end up with massive overcrowding. So the people are living, multiple families per housing unit, illegal garage conversions, all sorts of impacts of people living in neighborhoods. But the primary impact is that if you design a neighborhood for population X and you put two X's in that neighborhood, the roads, water, sewer, police, fire, parks, schools, all deteriorate faster than they were designed for because we're exceeding design capacity. And in every neighborhood in California, we're exceeding design capacity, some worse than others. But the reality is, the overcrowding is wearing out our neighborhoods, and we're not planning for that future. The estimates are we're trillions of dollars underfunded for the maintenance of the infrastructure we have. And a big part of the reason is because we're overusing the investment beyond that that it was designed for. And then the final consequence of an inadequate supply of housing is prices are artificially high. Now, how many of you like having your home price high? Come on. Now, how many of you would be excited to have your home price drop by 10, 15, 20%? I mean, at the end of the day, that's one of the challenges we have, is people like it the way it is. And it's kind of "I got mine." And the challenge we have is that creates an even bigger affordability gap that I'll go into in just a little bit. Now, subsidized housing, public housing, as it's often referred to, doesn't necessarily have the most positive public perception. How many of you are excited to have a quote-unquote "public housing project" built next to your neighborhood? I have two. So our job at National Corps is we're currently under construction in San Clemente, Yorba Linda, Pasadena, San Bernardino, in Rialto, and Oceanside. So we have projects under construction in all of those communities. But the -- But the challenge that we have going into is people have a perception of public housing. So I want to show you a few pictures of what our projects look like. So this is Citrus Grove in Rialto, California. So this is an affordable housing project, a subsidized project. This is in Rancho Cucamonga, Villagio and Rancho Cucamonga. I mean, one of the things that we're proud about, and you would find with almost all new affordable housing being built, is you could not tell the difference between an affordable housing project and a market-rate housing project. This is in Yorba Linda, California, where we have two projects that are, one's under construction now and phase two will be started. This is Oak Terrace in Yorba, this is the one that's under construction right now in Yorba Linda. This is San Clemente, the project that's under construction in San Clemente right now. And if any of you'd like to go to a grand opening of any of these, we'd be happy to show you what we do. This is Fontana, is it Sierra in Fontana, California? It's a senior housing project. And then Impressions at Valley Center in Victorville, California. And so that just gives you an idea of the kinds of properties that we build that are quote-unquote "subsidized housing." Now, this is some of the statistics that I gave you a little bit ago, and you can see California's housing shortage, the impact it has on the cost of housing, median home prices nationwide, 180, California, 440, Orange County, 630. And one of the biggest challenges we have is California's lowest-income families spending up to 2/3 of their income on their housing, which further deteriorates their ability to provide for their families, provide discretionary costs, cover discretionary costs, et cetera. And so it has a huge impact on our inability to provide affordable housing. One of the other questions I was asked to respond to, and I'll get to this one in a minute, is about what about water? So before I get to that, let me kind of finish some of the other subsidy issues. So I think everybody would agree, there are always certain populations that would require some assistance, whether it's people that are developmentally disabled. One of the biggest challenges we have in California is the senior population. We have about 2,500 senior properties, and it's really sad to see how families treat the seniors, the elders in their families. Most families are abandoning their seniors, and if we as a society don't provide housing for seniors, it has a huge negative impact. There's a significant movement to make sure all of our veterans are adequately housed. Many of our veterans are dealing with issues and stresses that we're helping them work through, and being able to provide shelters is a great platform for them to be able to start. One of the biggest things that we do as an organization is provide a launching pad, not a landing pad. So for those families that need to stabilize, be able to earn income, to be able to launch into the market-rate apartments, that's a big part of what we do as an organization. And all of that requires some level of assistance and support from us as a community. But what's really important is for every community to understand what their community's needs are. What is the population that has needs within your community, and what is the housing that would be necessary to meet the needs of that population? And the challenges we have as a society, and in California especially right now, is we've done a great job of taking away most of the resources available for subsidy. So the challenge for City of Huntington Beach, other cities, is okay, since we no longer have the dollars, how are we going to be able to move forward to address the production of the necessary units for the population we have as a community? How many of your children can afford to live in the neighborhood that they grew up in? That's one of the biggest challenges we have in Orange County. If you happen to have a millennial who's a dot-com bubble and you can go move in with them, that's probably a good opportunity. But for the vast majority of our children, they're not going to be able to afford to live and raise, how many of you would like to have your grandchildren nearby? Come on, maybe you don't want your children nearby, but there's a good chance you're going to want your grandchildren nearby. We as a community need to be thoughtful about how are we creating complete communities where the entire population is going to have an opportunity to stay in the community. And so the last slide, the last issue with regard to water, is how can we afford to build more houses when we don't have enough water for the housing that we have? Well, the bottom line, houses don't drink water. People do. And new housing consumes much less water than old housing. And since the people are already here consuming water in low-performing housing units, where there's not all of the modern technology for water consumption, we're actually consuming a lot more water than if we built the million and a half additional units with logical landscaping in order for people to be able to have access to the latest technology and low-water usage. And so it's actually a bit of a straw man issue to say we can't build any more houses because they're going to consume water. It's the people that consume the water, not the houses. You know, the challenge that I think we all have is, it's really hard to think about the fact that we're in, we own a house, we're in, but we have a responsibility for those that are coming along behind us. And the challenge we have as a society to really think about, how are we going to meet the needs? How are we going to provide for opportunities that exist? Because the challenge we have, how many of you believe in the free market? How many of you are free market? So I am a conservative, free-market advocate. The biggest challenge we have is we've distorted the free market the way it exists today. We've distorted it where the cost of the production of new housing is heavily penalized through regulations, through meeting environmental requirements, through fees that are put on housing. No blame for local government. Local government plays the game they're dealt, which incents retail sales tax investments, because cities get a portion of their discretionary dollars from retail sales tax, but not from housing. And so because of the policies we have that add to the cost of the production of housing, we've distorted the market that makes it more difficult to produce additional housing units, and makes it very difficult to produce housing units that are affordable. The last example is City of Chino Hills. Nobody here from Chino Hills? Anybody? One? There's one. It's about $100,000, $130,000 per house in fees to develop housing in Chino Hills. So how are you going to build an affordable house in Chino Hills? You have to build a $600,000 house in Chino Hills in order to be able to make a profit. And so as we begin to understand the market forces that are at work, how we've distorted the market to make it more difficult to produce affordable housing, what are the populations that really need subsidy? By working together and thinking about the long-term strategies that Richard talked about, we should be able to address the need. So with that, looking forward to all of your questions. Thank you very much.
Great stuff, both economic and moral. And I don't know about you, but I'm already up by two pens, so this has been a great session for me. Before I introduce our next speaker, just a call for those index cards. If you've, any of you have questions, raise them up, pass them to our friendly helpers there on the end of the aisle. We'll start deciphering your language and putting those cues in order for the As. So while that is happening, I need to turn my page and bring up our third panelist this evening, who is Todd Leishman. As of council, in Best, Best, and Krieger Municipal Law Practice Group, Todd represents water districts, cities, and other public agencies, as well as developer and other private clients. He helps ensure compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, the Planning and Zoning Law, the Subdivision Map Act, and other laws and regulations affecting development and municipalities. Todd received his law degree from the J. Rubin Clark School of Law at Brigham Young University, a master's degree in real estate development from the University of Southern California Price School of Public Policy, and an undergraduate degree in English, also from BYU. Ladies and gentlemen, please help me welcome Todd Leishman.
Hi. It's a pleasure to be with you. This is kind of a homecoming of sorts for me. I grew up at Newland and Garfield. I went to the Newland Elementary School, and then Talbert, and then I was an oiler. If you remember that mural on, what would it be, the Main Street side of the Science Building, I painted the oiler on that. Yeah, thank you. And I'm married to an artist, so my drawing's gotten a lot better, so. Yeah, just before I jump in, my role in this is to talk about the law affecting housing. And in this area, you can't really separate the law from policy. And we've heard a lot about policy tonight. We're going to hear a little bit more from me. But before I do, I don't live in Huntington Beach now. My wife and my three small children, guess where we live? Where does everybody live that grows up here and moves away and stays in Southern California? Not Irvine, no, I wish. Corona Dome, close, you're getting close. I live in the Inland Empire, I live, well, technically, I guess it's LA County, I live in Claremont. And I work, as you, maybe it was in the intro, I work in Irvine. I work right next to the airport. Guess how long I drive? On a good day, I drive an hour each way. So that's two hours away from my kids every day. On a typical day, guess how long I drive? It's two hours, guys. This morning, I woke up at 4:45, and I left my house at 5:00, and I counted myself lucky that I got to work at 6:00. That's my life now. I don't live at Newland and Garfield anymore. I wish I did. I wish I could afford it. And guys, I'm an attorney at a good firm. I wish I could afford to raise my kids by the ocean. All of my siblings are gone. There were five of us. We all left. We couldn't stay. And we all like to surf, so it makes it a little hard. But that's, that's just the reality, right? That's the, you don't think so? You give me a rise, a raise, I'll give you a break. Here's the thing, is that the state housing policy encourages, ensures that suitable housing will be available in every community at every income level. That's the policy. And so to facilitate that, state law, our state legislature, requires that every city, but let me back up just a little bit. Cities and towns are creatures of the state. Legally, they have no independent existence. They derive their existence, they derive all their powers from the state, and it's the sufferance of the state that they do what they do. It's not like the states in the United States that have independent powers from the federal government. Our cities aren't part of a system of federalism. That's important to understand, because what the state law says circumscribes what cities can and cannot do. And the people of California, through their legislature, have decided that suitable housing must be available in every city at all income levels. And so every city is required to have a general plan with a housing element. And that housing element has to make provision for that city's fair share of housing, as determined by a regional, well, in our case, it's SCAG, the Southern California Association of Governments, or something like that, I can never remember. Everybody calls it SCAG. So SCAG, by state mandate, gets together and they look at the overall, mostly it's transportation, but at the projected population growth, and they try to figure out, where are they going to live? How many people are going to land in Huntington Beach over the next 10 or 20 years? And that's going to happen no matter what. It's going to happen no matter, no matter whether Huntington Beach approves even one more new house or not, those, what was it, 20,000 people we saw on the slide? Those 20,000 people are going to end up here. And so we get to decide. I used to visit families here in Huntington Beach, down by Offa Slater, where there'd be three or four families doubled up and tripled, quadrupled up in a house. I saw an entire family of four living in one bedroom, mom, dad, actually it was five, the three kids shared the bottom bunk. 20,000 people are going to come to Huntington Beach, whether you make, whether there's new housing for them or not. And so the state requires that every city have a general plan with a housing element that takes into account and accommodates that regional housing needs assessment. It's fair share that SCAG gives us. Right? And so that's the law. In fact, if you don't keep that law, if you don't update your general plan to accommodate that additional growth that SCAG says is going to hit your city, then if you let it go on too long, you don't get to say no to housing projects anymore. The state takes that ability away from a city. So you want to update your general plan, and you, it has to be updated every eight years, and you want to get it updated to incorporate that RENA, that Regional Housing Needs Assessment. I'm not going to keep saying that, I'm going to call it a RENA from now on. That's what everybody calls it. So if you don't, you have to accommodate the RENA in your plan. And it can't just be lip service either. You can't just say, hey, our general plan, we're going to put, we're going to put housing for 20,000 new people right where Central Park is. Because that's kind of a sham, right? You have to actually, as the state says, you have to actually zone for it. And then if somebody comes in and their project complies with the general plan and with the zoning code, which is supposed to reflect the general plan, a city can't say no unless they can show that that project is unsafe or has severe environmental impacts and the like. So I guess if I were to boil down my thesis, trying to put myself in your shoes, and frankly, I wish I was in your shoes, as a resident of Huntington Beach again, if I were living here and I were concerned about growth, I got to tell you, state law doesn't give you much of a choice about whether growth is going to happen or not. In fact, it's not the law that's going to bring 20,000 people here. 20,000 people are going to come, and state law says you have to accommodate them with houses. What you do get to choose, what every city gets to choose, is what that growth looks like. You get to decide through your elected officials, you get to decide, where do we want that growth? And what do we want it to look like? And that's where the opportunity lies for your community, for what was my community, and for every community. You get to decide what the future housing looks like. And it can be beautiful. I've been to very low affordable housing projects. In fact, there's one by Meta Housing in Long Beach. It's a senior arts colony, and it's gorgeous. It's award-winning architecture. If I were to pay market rates for a place like that, it'd be $4,000 or $5,000 a month. It's a gorgeous project. And it's for people that can only afford to pay $300 or $400 a month. Projects like that don't bring a community down, they elevate them. And something that, another reality of the official affordable housing, like the very low and the low-income housing, is that there is such a waiting list for, to get into those I know affordable housing developers that tell me how they get, they have maybe 100 units, guess how many applications they get? 5,000, 7,000, 8,000 applications are not, is not unheard of. So what do they do to pick? It's not first come, first served. The developers and the affordable housing operators, they actually, well, first of all, they weed it out considerably on the applications alone, and then they go and they actually do home visits. They do home visits. And they talk to the people, they see how they live, they talk to their neighbors, they find out, are they good neighbors? Would you, do you think they would be a good neighbor if they were to move? They kick the tires and vet those people way more than my neighbors have been vetted in Claremont, way more than my neighbors were vetted in Offa Langen McPark. My point with that is that not only can affordable housing look way better than market-rate housing, so physically, it's not taking down a neighborhood, and its demographic, it's way more selective than even the most elitist neighborhood in Beverly Hills, or for that matter, Seacliff. Affordable housing isn't all the same. Market-rate housing isn't all the same. Every community gets to pick, what will their affordable housing look like? What will those neighborhoods look like? And what will the market-rate neighborhoods look like? How dense will they be? Where will they be? And do we want to make provision for isn't all the same. Market rate housing isn't all the same. Every community gets to pick, what will their affordable housing look like? What will those neighborhoods look like? And what will the market rate neighborhoods look like? How dense will they be? Where will they be? And do we wanna make provision for the schoolteachers, the firefighters, the police? And, in some cases, well, pretty much, the architects, the landscape architects, the engineers, and some lawyers. I guess that's my thesis tonight, um, and I look forward to your questions. Thanks.
All right. Let's get going. Uh, there, these are, for all the panel, I have one that's specific. But just feel free to jump in, whoever wants to start. How do you see the July sixteenth, twenty fifteen HUD Affordable Housing Rule affecting Orange County, Huntington Beach, and community associations in particular?
Which HUD Affordable Housing Rule? The Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing Rule? Does anybody wanna know, is that the rule? Okay. So let me, I'll just give you the quick dynamic, and this is something that, um, you know, I personally have an issue with, but the, the rule is that except in, uh, extenuating circumstances, all new public investment has to be what's in, they call neighborhoods of opportunity. So the studies show children that are in good school districts, that are primarily in higher socioeconomic neighborhoods, perform better than children's, that are, children that are in bad school districts. So what the Supreme Court ruled, and what HUD ruled, is that new public investment has to be, the majority of it has to be in neighborhoods of opportunity, as opposed to over concentrations of poverty in ghetto areas or in low-income areas. And so the impact of that for every community, every region, every state, is to really think about, how do we take limited public subsidy and produce housing in the most expensive neighborhoods that we have? And so it's gonna be a big challenge for cities, it's gonna be a big challenge for developers, in order to see how that works out. The net effect could be a lot fewer units being produced, because if you are producing units in lower-cost areas, and, and my argument is, it has often been the case, and especially over the last twenty years, where new public investment can be catalytic for the transformation of challenged neighborhoods where the market is not investing. And so I'll give an example. We're currently doing a massive redevelopment of a neighborhood called Waterman Gardens in San Bernardino, corner of Baseline and Waterman, nineteen forty-era public housing project, historically a very challenged neighborhood. No new investment will go into that neighborhood, except for what we're doing to be catalytic, to attract new private sector investment. So the ultimate challenge will be higher cost to produce housing in neighborhoods of opportunity, fewer resources to help transform the most challenged neighborhoods. So I hope I answered the question.
Uh, we've talked about housing is part of our infrastructure, so there's a related question to that, if we, if we increase, uh, our housing, and we have, and the people are here, how, please tell us how our crowded streets will handle more cars?
Wanna go first, you wanna go first?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's, that's a great question. There are two dimensions to it, right? One are the people who are already here. And as Steve, I love the line, and we'll steal it, you know, houses don't drink water, people do. Houses don't drive cars or commute, people do. So to the extent that they're already here, that's one issue, and we're already dealing with it. As relates to the future growth that's coming within the county and various other cities, you can't do housing without transportation. You can't do a housing without worrying about utilities and, um, and sewer. So it all has to be part of a comprehensive plan and a collaborative approach. And it's about decision-making about where that public investment is gonna go, hand in hand with private investment, to make this stuff work.
Right, the, the, so ju- just a quick, you know, there's, for the la, for decades and decades, we've been talking about jobs, housing balance. And so ultimately, the ideal scenario is you have people live in proximity to their jobs. And so it's obvious by growing your job base, which you've been very successful in doing, and not increasing your housing base, you're forcing people to live further and further away. And so the effect of that is more miles traveled. And so at the end of the day, the more we can think about and focus on jobs-housing balance, to make sure that we have enough houses for the jobs that we have, then the net effect on congestion will actually be less than forcing people to live further and further away.
Now, one thing I'll add is, uh, City of LA, I think it was, what, five years, four years ago, added the sales tax. And I remember what the measure was in LA, to actually build the subway from downtown to Santa Monica, right? To connect that. And what Orange County had chosen to do years ago was to add our sales tax once, twice, now I think three times, to expand our freeways. So there were policy choices that we all made that have sort of put us in a position to have to deal with traffic. Whereas LA, in this last, uh, go-around, made policy decisions to invest in public transit.
But let me make a, so I'm a huge car fan. And how many of, so my prediction is, uh, and this is now everybody's prediction, but by twenty twenty, self-driving vehicles will be commercially available. And the statistics show that self-driving, the biggest problem we have on the roads today are humans. Ninety-eight percent of all accidents are caused by humans. And so if we take the humans out of the equation, and the cars are driving themselves, we increase the capacity of our existing infrastructure by almost three times. And so I'm envisioning within a decade, we're gonna have, see massive beneficial shifts in the movement of people, based on the right vehicle at the right time, being driven by a computer, and significantly increasing the efficiency of our system, which will be much more beneficial, and I'll make a political statement, than a high-speed rail between Madera and Modesto's. Just saying.
Agree with that.
Amen.
I don't know if all drivers are bad, but the one in front of me always is. So, uh, kind of on that, related to that note, because you've mentioned LA, and Steve's mentioned Chino Hills, and we're talking about transportation, so someone asks, why not build affordable housing inland, such as Lake Elsinore, where costs are less expensive?
That's a great line, great. Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, remember, we need a million and a half more housing units statewide. So we need to build absolutely all the housing that we can build, anywhere we can build it. The challenge goes back to, and this is an Orange County challenge, and I'm gonna say, this audience beside, Orange County is the fastest aging county in the country. None of you represent that. The, the challenge is, all of the young executives and workers, et cetera, are moving inland, where it's more, you know, they say, uh, commute till you qualify, is kinda one of the things. And as long as Orange County keeps growing the jobs, and forcing families to move further and further away, the deterioration of the quality of life will eventually mean the jobs will follow the people. But in the meantime, we need job growth in the inland regions, housing growth in the coastal regions, to try and keep things in balance. But we need to build absolutely all the housing, you know, we, and just, just to meet the natural population growth that Richard talked about, we need to produce somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and thirty thousand housing units a year, for just our own natural population growth. And we're producing maybe half of that right now. And so at the end of the day, the hole is getting deeper and deeper. And I would argue that the housing crisis we have in California is much bigger than the water crisis. Because the water crisis is purely political. It's how we use our water, we have more than enough water, it's just how we choose to use it. The housing crisis, there is no solution, there is no leadership, excuse me, and the opposition to housing development is massive. Every community we try and build in, the opposition, the protests, everything that goes along with it, means building new housing units everywhere in the state of California is very difficult.
That's why I like having Steve on a panel. Bold statements. Maybe we can get you to talk about religion too, so far, talk about high-speed rail and water, so, okay.
It's the third item.
Uh, kind of, um, related to that, because we're talking about having to build so many new, uh, homes, just to meet with, to meet our current demands. Uh, this person is asking about new construction. A hundred units per acre, budding up to the curb, isn't beneficial for anyone. How can you assure that growth uses common sense, and that's underlined, I think we all would like common sense with our policy? How can you assure that growth uses common sense, like thirty-five units per acre?
Well, let, let, let me go first, and then Richard can give the facts. So, um, so we just finished a seven-story building in downtown Downey, that Julie, I don't know, I think it was fifty units to the acre, fifty, sixty units to the acre, something like that. So, high density in the right place, and this was a project the city of Downey, the community of Downey, they love. I mean, this is a gorgeous project. Donald Trump lives in more than a hundred unit-per-acre density development. And so it's all about the right development in the right place, so there is not one-size-fits-all. And you would not wanna put thirty-five units to the acre in a, in a single-family residential neighborhood. But there are places where thirty-five, forty, fifty, sixty, seventy can make a lot of sense, depending on the type of units.
Well, I think that's exactly right, and I think it's apropos to Todd's point, it's what, what does the community want that housing to look like? Because if the fact is, the state law requires you to plan for it, requires all the states to plan for it, it's really about design, and we have a term that we call density by design. And when someone says it's a hundred units per acre versus thirty-five, they can actually look the same. Um, and they can perform, I think the issue of setback from a sidewalk is a good point, and things have to be sensible in terms of how that particular street works. Obviously, adjacencies, uh, to single-family existing neighborhoods versus major thoroughfares and arterials are important considerations, but the term density is, um, i- is somewhat misleading, or certainly a loaded term. The other term we like to use maybe instead sometimes, um, is friendly proximity. So, so you could, right, so is that a nicer way of putting it, as opposed to the D-word, which sounds kind of ominous? Because quite frankly, we could show pictures, and I'm not advocating one way or the other, we could show pictures of thirty-five to the acre and a hundred to the acre, and we could show you pictures all day long of communities that you would prefer the hundred to the acre, for a lot of different reasons.
As a lawyer, I think I really like that phrase, friendly proximity.
I think the issue-
I don't know if it's legal, but we can try.
Uh, the, the thing that I'd just like to come back to is the point about different markets and different lifestyles. So for example, when we start thinking about, you know, a condominium or an elevator-type building, and you start thinking about lifestyle, you say, gosh, you know what, I've been living in my two thousand square-foot house, I got yard work, I've got to deal with, uh, I mean, if I have a little pool in the back, I've gotta deal with that, I've gotta deal with, you know, different things happening, I have maintenance issues, I've got costs of running this house, but if I could move to a fifteen hundred square-foot condo, or an eleven hundred square-foot condo, have everything included, and feel more safe and secure in a better-built environment, that actually can improve the lifestyle and the wellness of the community. It also frees up the house for the family to move into the community, and that's a very important piece of that.
Well, and just going back to, it really depends on where. So if we were in Apple Valley right now, and you were to start talking about six units to the acre, they would run you out. Yeah, I mean, because for them, like, a half-acre lot is sacred. And so it really depends on the nature, the character of the community, Norco, you know, horse town, USA, I think it is. I mean, they, obviously, the design and the nature of the community, as Todd said, is critical, and the community gets to establish, what is the character of the community? Certain places, high-density make no sense. Other places, high-density can bring life and vibrancy into an area, and can become a real economic catalyst.
I, I echo the point that, uh, not everything of the same density looks the same. There are great differences, depending on the design. And how do you ensure that it's done in a common-sense way? I think that depends on you. It depends on you and your city, you get to decide.
This says for Steve, but you would've answered it anyway. Um, on that note, as we're talking about density and what it looks like, and what our communities want, who decides what is affordable, and who decides where it's built? And who decides who qualifies? In particular, this person mentioned the, the example about the LA homeless program. So who paid for those homes?
Great question. Oh, you want me to-
Yes, you need an answer, you can't just acknowledge it.
So he- here's the challenge, and, and, um, there, doing affordable housing development is completely ill-locked. Nobody in their right mind would try and build subsidized housing. Because the rules are more cumbersome than any other regulated industry, whether you're a bank, or a hospital, or anything else. Because we have multiple agencies, on, on any one of our properties, we probably average six audits a year from six different governmental agencies, all of which have their own criteria that determine, quote-unquote, "the definition of affordability." And so there's, there's primary definitions, which talk about a percentage of median income. So a family would qualify if they're eighty percent, or sixty percent, or forty percent of the median income. And then their rents are subsidized from, based on the fair-market rents in the neighborhood, a commensurate percentage of subsidy. And so it depends on the source of the subsidy. Many cities, when they had redevelopment agencies, would want certain levels of affordability for certain families. Now, the primary source of subsidy for affordable housing are tax credits. Tax credits push you towards a sixty percent of median income subsidy. Public housing, which is what housing authorities develop, are usually tied where you pay thirty percent of your income. Whatever your income is, you pay thirty percent of that for a unit, for a housing unit. And I think the number for the Orange County Housing Authority is somewhere near seventy thousand families on the waitlist for public housing from the Orange County Housing Authority. And so it really depends on the source of funds. There are other funds that are tied to certain qualifications, as I said, veterans. And now there are what they call VASH vouchers, which are only for veterans, then they have similar income ties. Um, then there's also funding for different types of developmentally disabled. Um, one of the things that I try and make sure we have in all of our developments are what they call TAY use, TAY units, um, for foster kids that are aging out of the foster program. Something like eighty percent of foster kids that come out of the foster program end up being homeless. And so how, once again, are we as a society thinking about providing shelter for the kids coming out of the foster program? And so it really depends on the type of subsidy, and then the classification that goes along with it. And there's easily a chart of twenty, thirty different classifications. And then when you develop a property that, say, has a hundred units, if you have twenty of one, and twenty of another, and ten of one, and ten of another, you're now having to measure and qualify the residents, as Todd indicated, for, based on meeting every single requirement along the way.
And, family size-
Right.
Bedroom count-
Ages-
It's all related to this big matrix that you have to kind of understand as you're looking at it.
That's great, thank you, very helpful.
Just, real quick, legally, the, as, as we just heard, it's really mostly state and federal agencies that set the levels, both of the subsidy and, and of the criteria, and, um, yeah, and, and it's helpful to remember that affordable housing is an official term of art in this context, that there is affordable. You can almost put a capital A on it. And there's, um, low income, and there's very low income, and those are just different tiers. That's separate from what your schoolteacher or firefighter would consider to be affordable housing. We, we tend to think of that in the industry, or talk to, about that, as, as workforce housing. And that's not subsidized, and it's not part of that whole state, federal, um, regime, but, uh, it's just as important to the vitality of a community. You've got your workforce of housing that's affordable to your working middle class, and then you've got your, your low and very low, um, did I leave anything out?
That's good.
Those are the two.
Well, you know, part of this is really to ask these questions, to, uh, educate about policy, explain these terms, so I, I'm gonna ask a question that I'm sure a lot of people have wondered about, and it's not an easy question, but you've, you showed some beautiful pictures that Cor has built of developments throughout Southern California. But when we're talking about these terms, public housing, affordable housing, and with the capital A, very-low-income housing, really, how, how long do they stay in that beautiful, pristine condition, like the projects that you showed? And that's the question, and I think it's a fair question, because there's, there's fear about some of these projects, because they've, they've seen what it used to be in some big urban cities, and things definitely are changing, so if you could address that.
All right, great question. So, the history of housing in the United States, you know, the, the big public housing projects that you would see pict- that you would see pictures of in Chicago, or, you know, Watts Towers in LA, Jordan Downs, those communities are no longer the way housing is done. So, the developments that we build have two kind of critical timeframes. Number one is, our partners in these developments are the big banks and insurance companies that buy the tax credits. And so, the federal government issues tax credits, and they buy these tax credits. And they get Community Reinvestment Act credit for buying the tax credits. We use the money as equity in the development. That has a 15-year time period. So, that property has to look and perform for the first 15 years of its life as it was year one, because the equity investors want to make sure that they have no liability at the end of that 15 years. Most affordable housing projects have a 55-year time period on them. So, usually, the affordability will run for 55 years. What happens in our projects, and we're 24-years-old, and we are not a merchant builder, so we build and we hold. So, we own about 10,000 of our own units that we've built and developed over the last 24 years. And so, for us as an owner, we're highly motivated to keep the quality of our units up, because that's an asset that we have. So, usually, what happens in year 15 is there's another tax-credit event to rehabilitate the units, to do whatever needs to be done to maintain those units, which adds another 15-year life of responsibility from our equity partners on those deals. And so, when we develop partnerships with cities, one of the things cities like about working with organizations like ours, is we don't build and flip. We build and hold. We maintain the partnerships with the city. And one of the things that our residents are very good at is picking up the phone and calling a city council person. And we're very responsive to the needs of our residents. And so, if you look at most of the new affordable housing being built, the companies that are building that, and managing it, and owning it, and holding it, have a vested interest in keeping it up, as opposed to, and I want to be very careful, any housing authority officials here, because many housing authorities do a very good job, but as opposed to government-owned housing. So, the big challenge we have is there's about 1.2 million units of government-owned housing nationwide. That's the public housing that are the big projects, and, you know, all sorts of different projects that I talked about before. They've never had a mechanism for really keeping themselves up, other than ongoing federal subsidy. And that's one of the things that the new HUD administration is working on. None of them have any debt on them, and so, they've come up with a new way to capitalize the redevelopment of those old public housing units, which is what we're doing in Waterman Gardens. I feel like I'm kind of rambling right now, but what I can tell you is, new affordable housing being built will be maintained for the life of the project, because it's in the owner's interest to maintain it. And the old public housing that's been a problem now has a new mechanism for revitalizing that housing. So, the old days of dilapidated public housing should be behind us.
Really great question. Thank you for asking that, and thank you for that answer. You've talked about tax credits. I'm trying to find questions for you, Todd, but no one wants to ask the lawyer any questions. But here's, maybe, maybe you can jump in on this one. High-density, sustainable, and affordable housing is heavily subsidized and eligible for substantial tax credits due to AB 32 and SB 375. So, how is this free market?
Okay, all right, because I brought up the free market. All right. The last time the state of California produced enough housing for its population was in the 1950s. And in the 1950s is when FHA was created, Fannie and Freddie were going, and there was a huge partnership between the public and private sector with the GI Bill to make sure returning war veterans would have an access to housing. So, in the 1950s, you had many, many communities were built, and we had an adequate supply of housing. But even then, it wasn't completely free market, because how many of you have a mortgage deduction that you take advantage of? Come on, you can admit it. And if you have your house paid off, good for you. The biggest single subsidy or market distortion we have nationwide is the mortgage tax deduction. It's about $140 billion a year of tax subsidy that goes to encourage homeownership. And so, at the end of the day, we distort the market for housing at the federal level, at the state level, at the local level, through restrictions and regulations at every single level. And so, when I talk about I'm a huge advocate of the free market, how many of you are still benefiting from the Prop 13 property tax? Talk of, I mean, that is even a larger subsidy than the mortgage deduction. When you look at the cost of providing services, my mom, 81-years-old, has two houses, one in Redlands and one in Big Bear. She's a huge beneficiary of that subsidy. And so, at the end of the day, the subsidies that allow the market distortions to occur are what then create the need for subsidy for certain types of housing to be produced that would be affordable. And so, all I'm arguing is, if we were truly letting the market run, so that there were not obstacles to the production of housing, fees and environmental restrictions that add to the cost of housing, and other subsidies for homeownership, then we would need a lot less subsidy for those people in special needs. So, we do not have a free market for housing. There's subsidy throughout the whole system. The two biggest subsidies in California are the mortgage deduction and Prop 13, as far as homeownership's concerned. And so, taking all of that into consideration, we've created probably the most complicated housing combination of factors, as you can imagine. And so, the only way we're going to be able to produce certain kinds of housing is with some additional subsidy. Now, what California's done is eliminated most of the government subsidy for affordable housing. With the elimination of redevelopment agencies, the governor has vetoed every additional housing subsidy bill that comes along, because the governor doesn't want more housing in California. The governor is, has always been, no growth. His analysis is, California has too many people in it. It'd be really good if maybe half the population left. So, at the end of the day, for those of us that care about people, care about and think people need housing, we're really trying to find ways to make that work. I, once again, kind of a rambling answer, but I would welcome the free market into housing.
No, that's a good point.
Okay. We're going to change the conversation. Why do you continue to frame these projects as sustainable when construction practices and buildings generate the most greenhouse gases? Wouldn't lower densities result in less harm to the environment?
I feel like I'm talking way too much.
No, I mean, there's a number of ways to think about that question, and it's not as straightforward a question as you read it, quite frankly.
I'm just going by what's on the card, man.
No, I know. Yeah, but I mean, it's kind of, there's a lot of conversation around the question. I mean, the reality is, in many respects, or I should put it another way, the argument in favor of higher-density housing is the concentration of jobs-housing balance, the ability to facilitate walkability, the ability to facilitate bicycling and other things that are potentially lower-impact. So, the arguments in favor of higher-density typically suggest that they are a greener form of development. I rarely hear the other side of the argument, which was, which is why I took pause, which is that lower-density development is more sustainable. Because according to the literature and a lot of the economic analysis that's being done, most of the results of that conversation suggest that higher-density is actually a more sustainable, long-term process. Now, what is happening is, if you were to argue that the construction process creates that impact, the nature of construction materials and processes, manufacturing processes, Steve can talk about some of that, are actually reducing the impacts of construction significantly. So, I think the jury's out on those two points.
So, let me be completely politically incorrect, since I happen anyway.
All right.
The most energy-efficient, greenhouse-gas-sensitive development we could do would be single-family, detached-rant-style homes, single-story. That is the California prototype for the most energy-efficient unit. The problem we have in California is 65% of the state of California is owned by the federal government. San Bernardino County, 81.5% of San Bernardino County is owned by the federal government. And so, we don't have enough land for the population to all live in single-family, detached, one-story housing units. And so, then you start getting into also the fact that people want to live in certain parts of the state more than others. You know, I happen to think Death Valley's very nice. Most of you don't want to live there, because you want to live near the coast. The market drives then the opportunity for higher-density, because the prices can afford it. You know, downtown LA costs $600 per square foot to build a high-density condominium project. A single-family detached house in the Atlantic Empire is $60 per square foot. And so, at the end of the day, the market determines where density is going to go. The argument is, if you had the jobs-housing balance that Richard was talking about, you'd have fewer people driving, you'd have more walkability, bikes, et cetera, et cetera, and that would reduce the impact, because the further people have to drive for jobs, the more they're then generating greenhouse gas emissions. And so, the challenge we have as a society is, we don't have enough land, as we've currently allocated the land. My college project, by the way, was the development of Camp Pendleton. Talk about a prime piece of real estate to develop. That would have been really cool. But at the end of the day, we have to work within the land constraints and the infrastructure constraints we have. How many miles of roads can we afford to build? How many miles of water and sewer and electricity can we run, natural gas, et cetera? And where are the benefits of concentrating certain activities? It's not a greenhouse-gas conversation, per se, but it is an overall resource sustainability question. I mean, if everybody could live in a single-family, one-story detached house, that would probably, from a greenhouse-gas standpoint, and walk to work, that would be the most efficient.
Well, and that's, the reality is that you have to distinguish between the construction process and the ongoing usage of materials and resources. I think that's really the trick, and that's where, you know, the conversation about accommodating growth, when, on the one side of the spectrum, when you have folks who advocate infill and high-density, the reality is, that can only really support about 10% of the growth that's coming. And still, about 90% of the growth is going to need to be in lower-density settings in some form or function, so hence the political conundrum, right? Because there have been decisions made that say, "We're not going to build in those areas that are sensitive," or "in those areas that currently don't have resources," or "we'll make it prohibitively expensive to bring that infrastructure over the hill and charge that new development for that." So, you end up with political decisions that are not market-based decisions. And that's where, you know, the point about collaboration has to come to the table, about how you start thinking about priorities, and how communities start to decide about how they're going to work together to, again, accommodate growth that all of us, I think, at least in this panel, agree is coming anyway.
You have a great question that ties into this, because you have pressure from the state that has passed laws like AB 32 and SB 375. Through the SCAG process, we have the Sustainable Community Strategy, which is shaping where people should live, based on policy. And we've talked about high-density and high-density versus greenhouse gases and environmental issues and transportation. So, we have a question who says, this question asks, "Why do you always mention that young people," like the author of this question, millennials and younger, can live in the new high-density housing? All of the young people I know can't afford these rent prices, upwards of $1,200 for a tiny studio a month, can't wait seven years on a waitlist for affordable housing, and absolutely don't want to live in the new ugly, high-density apartments.
Well--
I have some legislators in Sacramento that would love to hear this question, because they seem to think you all want to live in urban areas.
So, we have, Jason with my firm is sitting back over there, and he's in that category, and he helped me with the slide, so thank you, Jason. Appreciate that. Our firm, we have a whole bunch of millennials in our company, from, and our offices are in, here in Southern California. We're in San Francisco, New York, and Atlanta. And when we talk to our staff, who are, you know, living in these different cities, and the different mindsets about why they're choosing to live in different geographies around the country, everybody has a different reason for why they're there. And so, what I come down to about the question of, "Nobody wants to live in that apartment. People won't pay for this, or can't pay for that," most of it's around choice. And there will always be segments who will choose, in the younger group, let's say, before they couple up, before they have a spouse, before they have kids, will make a choice to live in an urban environment and pay more. Others may choose to live in a more suburban or ex-urban environment and commute. So, we have to recognize that choice. The other thing I think that's important to also think about is that people make their housing choices, and this is based on statistical surveys, so not just an opinion, but people do make their housing choices based on their lifestyle change. So, a lifestyle change is when they couple up, so they get a spouse. The next lifestyle change, maybe when they have their kid. The next lifestyle change is when their spouses split, or the kids move out. Those are the inflection points when geographies change and where housing types change. And within each of those different scenarios, there are choices and lifestyle decisions that people make that are all across the board. And there is no one-size-fits-all.
Yeah, I think any attempt to flatten the millennials out into a particular demographic is kind of bunk.
Yeah, it doesn't work.
I'm Generation Y or X, or I don't know what I'm supposed to be a part of, but I never felt like it was accurate in describing me or my peers either, but I do, I do know from personal experience and from observation, that it is, those inflection points, you know, it's household formation, I think, is the single biggest driver for homeownership. Get married, you can still live like a single person, maybe not quite so slobby, and then, then you have kids, and then you have to grow up, and you can't live in downtown San Francisco and walk to work necessarily.
So, let's see if I can craft this in a way that pulls you, Todd, more into the conversation, because you've, we've mentioned some of these things with density and design and, you know, projects that are up to the curb, and you've mentioned some of the laws that we've had and what we're constrained by. So, this person is asking, "What can we do as a community to help define the look and feel of new homes? What can the residents do in working with their city leaders, or is it at a higher level to make sure that they're, they have a voice in what their community looks like in the future?"
I don't think that has a legal answer, but the practical answer, I think, is, get educated and get involved.
So, like being here tonight?
Yeah, show up, like you are tonight, and be somebody that, that staff and elected officials want to talk to. I'm going to be really blunt. Don't be a jerk. You be a jerk, you're going to get less of their attention, a lot less of their interest. Don't think you're going to bully your staff, the city staff, or bully your elected officials. It just doesn't work. You just make enemies.
So, I would add, I think, three things. One, try and know the facts. I mean, let's, to the extent we can be honest and deal with the truth about issues, it makes the conversation much more meaningful. Number two, go find what you like.
Yeah.
Be for something. Don't be against everything. Be for something, which means look around, travel around, you know, see, find really interesting, exciting places you like, and bring that back to the community. And then, number three, like Todd said, participate. Engage in the dialogue. And so, I think those would be really meaningful ways where you can add value to the conversation. And there are certain communities where, you know, they have a fully robust participatory process that, you know, ends up resulting in a high-quality environment.
And if you go out and get examples of projects that you think look great, and you walk into the planning desk, and you talk to a planner, and you say, "I brought you a few analogs." Use that word, use analogs. And the planner's eyes are going to get big, and it's just going to blow their mind, because now you're speaking planner speak. Show them a few analogs, projects that you like, and be somebody that, I can't underscore that enough, be somebody that they want to talk to.
That's great. Thank you. This question was, it's kind of like the one I had listed here on my list, so, gold star for this person. The question I had is, everyone always says that we're built out, so are we? But what this person asked is, "With most of the green space in Orange County gone, the major way to meet housing demand is to allow higher-density projects. So, how can elected officials support high-density projects, or the kinds of projects that we've been talking about tonight, when the voters who put them in office are opposed to high-density projects?"
That's a political problem, I think.
Yeah, glad I'm not an elected official.
Yeah.
But let me, let me deal with a couple of the myths that were in the question. Number one, we are nowhere near built out. We've made policy and political choices for how we allocate our land and use our land. And so, I mean, that, I mean, we have the Cleveland National Forest. I mean, if you want to look at the amount-- I mean, if you want to look at the amount, you fly over Southern California, you're going to see as much open space, you're going to see development. I mean, and so don't underestimate that. But more importantly, you know, we've gone in a very short period of time from 50, about, don't quote me on the exact numbers, but approximately 5,700 national retail chains to 2,700 national retail chains. If you want to look at a dying industry, it's physical retailing. And so at the end of the day, the amount of investment, I mean, just drive down Beach Boulevard and tell me you're maximizing the utilization of the land that exists within the community. And so be smart about what's trending, what's happening, and how do we maximize the value of the assets we have, which is primarily land. There's a ton of opportunity. And so as an elected official in a community to talk about the right development in the right place with the right design, increasing the value of the community and the opportunities of the community for your children and your grandchildren to be able to stay and live and grow up in the community, there has to be a resonance in there. I mean, there's always going to be NIMBYs. Any of you NIMBYs in the room? Want to admit it? Not in my backyard? Or how about bananas? Any bananas? Both absolutely nothing anywhere? I mean, that's a reality of human nature. Human nature is, I've got mine, I want to protect it, I want to defend it, I don't want those people within any proximity of what I'm trying to protect and defend. So as an elected official, you have to be able to overcome that with the logic of the truth, the reality of our demographics and our circumstances, and the benefits of the economics.
Okay. This one says, it's to you, Todd. It's kind of on this theme, "The state has too much power as far as affordable housing. How can the cities fight state law?"
Get involved.
Oh, come on, Todd.
Get educated and get involved and write your legislature, legislator. Honestly, that's the biggest problem that my municipal clients face, is it's not just individuals like you that might want to see state law change. My municipal clients, every city has a long list of code changes that they'd like to see. Everything from, everything from new law that would make it just a little bit easier to ensure that sober-living homes are not run by crooks, and that are actually beneficial to the disabled people that they're intended to serve. Or just a little bit easier to regulate medical marijuana dispensaries, or just a little bit easier. The list is so long, you guys. Cities want to see changes too, for you, in large part, for their residents, for their constituents. And the only thing that you can do is lobby your legislators. I don't know anything else. Maybe harness public opinion in the media? I don't know.
Well, I mean, I think the organization that, you know, ACC, that the cities in Orange County are part of, is a great opportunity to act in a collective fashion in order to be able to target certain laws. You know, being smart, being political, engaging. Pendulums shift, you know, right now, if you really want to have influence in Sacramento, elect Democrats, or figure out how to work with that particular system. To a large extent, we're the state of Northern California, because all the statewide elected officers are from Northern California. I don't understand that as a state of Southern Californian, how did we let that happen? And so, you know, at the end of the day, it is a matter of, it's about power and politics, and there's no reason why Southern California, with 65% of the state's population, doesn't have more control over what happens in Sacramento. So that's bad on all of us for not really organizing and exerting influence the way we could.
Okay.
That's true.
So we're kind of dancing around these tax and regulatory problems, and this person asks, "All demographic studies that I have seen show that California is losing population, losing jobs and businesses due to our tax and regulatory climate, none of which are improved by low-income housing." So, gentlemen, what are you doing?
Yeah, that's factually incorrect.
Yeah, I've never seen...
All right.
So that's not true. So it's actually, the true statement is California is gaining population. I put the slide up there, it's 800,000 people per year. Pretty big number. Okay? We are actually adding jobs. We actually lost jobs during the recession, for sure, but we're actually gaining jobs. And the majority of the demographic growth is from people who already live here. So, I mean, I think this is a reality that we have to deal with. Now, there are always cyclical scenarios where businesses, you know, two or three businesses move to Austin, Texas, and the world is falling apart. But when you look at the number of startups that take place in Orange County, the technological innovation around biomedical, around software, around, you know, various other design industries, we have a very vibrant and healthy economic environment. And I think that, yes, there are certain aspects, but when you think about the conversation around, you know, the taxes, and our taxes are higher in California, maybe it's a good weather tax in all seriousness, right? I mean, there are choices that people make to live in certain communities and to live in others, and as Steve said, you know, hypothetically, go to Death Valley, or you can stay here by the coast. And we can have different conversations about what lifestyle choices we want to make, but businesses are tending to vote by their lifestyle, and we are actually getting the kinds of jobs ultimately within the state that typically have higher wages. And for the first time coming out of this recession, the job growth over the last six months in the state of California were of the higher-wage categories. We're coming out of the recession early. We heard the newspapers and everyone saying, "We're trading quality jobs for lower-paying jobs." Well, six months ago, that switched. The job growth that we have now is actually on the higher-tier wages, and we've turned the corner. So I think the key, as Steve said, for number one, is let's understand what the facts are and look at all of that, and then have some rational policy discussion.
And I don't understand the connection between how housing that's affordable would have a negative impact on the development of the economy. Because one of the challenges business have are recruiting employees that can afford to live near where the business is. And so actually, the lack of housing that's affordable is a big impediment to business growth in California for them to be able to attract and retain the quality employees they need. If you're talking specifically about subsidized housing, the vast majority of people living in subsidized housing are working families. 75% of our units have working families in them, 25% have seniors. Now, I pushed hard that I want our seniors to go back to work, but I get a lot of resistance to that. And so at the end of the day, the positive impact for the workforce and the economy about having housing that's affordable is a dramatic positive impact. And as I said earlier, the vast majority of the subsidy that exists around housing is a result of artificially low property taxes for people that have been in their homes for a very long time, and the mortgage housing, the mortgage deduction that you also get credit for on your state income taxes. So if you're looking at the pure economics of the deal, subsidized housing is a fraction of the subsidy that occurs in housing.
Okay. We've got time for just a couple more questions, depending on how long your answers are. But since we're talking about jobs, and this was mentioned, Richard, if 50,000 people are commuting to Huntington Beach for work, what kind of jobs are they coming here for? And are those jobs paying enough for them to live in a beach city? I mean, that's specific to Huntington Beach, so I don't know if you have the...
Well, it's a, it's a combination. I don't have all that data in front of me, but for sure, it's broad. I mean, it relates to the hospitals, it relates to perhaps your schoolteachers, it relates to the technology industries, it relates to the service sector, certainly the hotels and the retail by the beach, and the retail by the freeway. There's a lot of different dimensions to that commuting pattern. We could look at that and decompose that a little bit more, but the critical issue is we have even more people leaving Huntington Beach to go to work elsewhere. So somewhere in there, there's a mismatch. Now, and most of the people who are commuting out of Huntington Beach, the largest proportion are actually going to Irvine to work. Okay? Within the Orange County cities, and then others are going all over. But the largest single group is actually going to Irvine, probably to the higher-paid professional locations. So I think it does speak to some degree to the mismatch between housing and jobs. And somehow, thinking about economic development, we were working with a city in LA, I won't name it, but one of the interesting growth cities, and we were going to be working on an economic development plan for that city. And in the request for proposal that the city put out, they listed all the things they wanted to look for, workforce training, working with their community college, figuring out how to get retailers in place because they get the tax money and all that. And I asked the question, I said, "What about housing? Housing's not economic development. We don't need to worry about housing." And I said, "Well, okay, well, that's going to be a failure of your plan because you have no alignment between the housing that you have in your cities and the kind of jobs that you want to attract." And so whatever those levels are, you have to be real conscious about how you think about economic development broadly speaking, tourism market that's very strong here, in addition to the technology and the design field, which is very strong in this part of the county. How does that align with the affordability and the types of housing you can develop?
Great, thank you very much. Couple of, two short, I think, technical questions. Are all the new high-rise housing projects designed to accommodate families? It's kind of a broad question.
Are all of them?
No.
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 I mean, there's different, obviously, there's student housing, there's senior housing, there's, you know, all different types. And so, as a matter of fact, most of the high-density, high-rise are probably not, in California especially, designed for families. They're more singles, double-income, no kids, empty nesters, retirees.
Okay. And then, this is going to be for Steve again. It's a good baseline question. What do housing fees go towards? You mentioned it was $130,000 per home in Chino Hills, so, and I know it's higher in some other cities in the state, so it gets at the heart of what's affordable. Where do all those fees go? Who gets that money?
So, so this is what, this is what happened, is because the state of California created a fiscal structure for local government that incents cities chasing retail. So it has been the case, a little less so now, but historically the case, an economic development win for one city was stealing an auto dealership from another city. Well, obviously, that's no net economic growth for the region. Or the billions of dollars that have been rebated back to retailers by cities has had a huge impact on the fiscalization of land use in cities. So cities view retails as positive, they'll do what they can to attract them, and they'll cut financial deals to attract retailers. So the city of Rancho Cucamonga, by the way, have you ever been to the Bass Pro Shop in Rancho Cucamonga? Any of you shop at Bass Pro? City of Rancho Cucamonga wrote about a $25 million check upfront to get Bass Pro Shop in Durancho. So that's what happens on the retail side. Because cities view housing as a net cost, because housing demands services, police, fire, et cetera, although I would once again maintain there's never been a house that's demanded a service, it's the people that demand the services, and people that are living in overcrowded conditions demand more services than people that are adequately housed. But what cities are able to do, logically do, is then determine what is the cost, the incremental cost of that new house on our roads, water, sewer. School districts do it on a per-classroom basis, utility districts all can layer on fees. So if you're building a new house, you have to pay a connection fee for the water, connection fee for the sewer. And they're able, as long as they can show a nexus, they can show the incremental cost of that house, and they can charge a fee for that. So where retailers, for the most part, get subsidized, housing has to pay 100% of the incremental cost of providing services for that housing. So that's where the fees go. For all the different utility services, all the different public services, many cities have park fees and other kinds of lighting district fees and community facility district fees, and, you know, there are cities that have ongoing operation and maintenance fees. And then, so all of that gets layered into that 100-plus thousand dollars. So when you, so the new homeowner is having to pay all of those additional incremental fees associated with the production of that new house. Does that answer the question?
Great, thank you very much.
The idea behind that is that, is that the city doesn't want to have to be footing the bill for the new infrastructure. So generally, you'll see that development closer in, infill development, where the infrastructure already comes to the property or to the lot, the fees tend to be lower because that new neighborhood you want to build five miles from the nearest road, sewer main, et cetera, is going to require a lot more money to take the sewer, water, power, et cetera, out to that neighborhood. And so then, the city's not going to pay for that. The city wants to put 100% of that new infrastructure cost on the development. And there are some cost-sharing things so that when other developments move into the neighborhood and benefit from the same infrastructure, they have to chip in too. But, but that's the big idea, is that the fees are supposed, there's supposed to be a nexus and a proportionality, that's the legal test. There's supposed to be a direct relationship with, with the project and the fee, between the project and the fee, and it has to be proportional. So Chino Hills can't go crazy and say that 130,000 is what it is if really the only cost of the infrastructure is maybe 40,000 a door? So they have to justify it. They literally have to do a report that justifies the amount of the fee.
And by the way, subsidized housing pays all of those fees as well. So there's no, as a matter of fact, when we build a project, not only do we have to pay all the fees that the market rate builder pays, but we then have to pay prevailing wage and additional environmental requirements. So the most expensive housing to build is subsidized housing. So the quality of our units, by regulation, is higher than the quality of the market rate units because of, where, once you accept public money, you get all the strings attached with it.
Really, really great information to end on. This last question I get to answer. Will tonight's presentation be rebroadcast on HB 3? Yes. Wave into the canvas.
Wait, I didn't know I was being taped.
That's right.
You signed the waiver.
Would you please? Oh, and on YouTube also. Excellent, I'm a YouTube star. I'm illustrious and a YouTube star. Thank you for that laugh. So would you please help me thank our panelists for being here tonight?
Thank you, sir.
So Orange County's future prosperity hinges on the region's ability to create a healthy, prosperous economy that promotes both jobs and housing, not one at the expense of the other, because of course, homes are where the jobs go to sleep at night. I'd like to thank, on behalf of ACC OC, I'd like to thank you all for being here tonight and engaging in this interesting, fascinating, witty, and thoughtful discussion. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you very much.